Good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of the city council, including the library and observatory board, housing authority board, and the city council representing the redevelopment successor agency. It's 1:00 PM September 7th, 2023. It's now time for a flag salute, which we will have led by Steve Quintanilla, our city attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristi, would you do roll call, please?
Of course. Councilmember Molado, present. Councilmember Marker, here. Councilmember Weil.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Downs.
I'm here.
Mayor Kite.
Here, thank you. It's time for a couple of presentations that will be looking at various groups in the area. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Isaiah Hagerman, our city manager, who would present. We will offer the various presentations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have three presentations today. The first one is going to be from the Rotary Club of Ranch Mirage, David Hammer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My pleasure to speak today about Rotary. The last time I was here was almost exactly two years ago. I know we have the new city council members since then. And I think I have a slide presentation for you. There we are. And I have the right date on it, too. Good. So I'm going to talk about who we are, what we are, and why we're here, because about Rotary. And so oftentimes, I'd say that Rotary is your friends, your neighbors. Looking at this photo, there's an insurance agent, a banker, a retired nurse, an active nurse, a soccer mom, a group of people. They're your friends and neighbors who get together. But we're more than that now. Starting about five years ago, we started introducing corporations and entities into Rotary. And I'm pleased to say that two years ago, the city of Ranch Mirage joined as a corporate member with Isaiah Hagerman, your city manager, as the active, as an active member. We also have the Chamber of Commerce as a member, Mission Hills Country Club as a corporate member, and a few more. So we, but we have all, all of us have one thing in common. We're here to serve, to give community service and protect this world a better place. This is one of our meetings when, at that time, Mayor, at that time, Ted was speaking to our club about what the city's doing. And so we meet almost weekly and hear about what's happening in our community and around the world. And as you know, we raise funds and we use that money for public purposes. One of them is the Children's Discovery Museum. They're representing a check this year to Cindy, and Cindy's, I know, speaking after me this afternoon about what's going on right now with the Children's Discovery Museum. Another beneficiary of our funds is the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission. And we're extremely active with them because we know they provide services throughout the valley, including in Ranch Mirage. They have an extensive outreach program here. They serve more than 1,000 people a day. They serve women and children. And so we gave them not just money, we gave them $1,000 this year from our foundation, but we also donate things. We have a Mac Attack where we collect the mac and cheese and donate that. And I think somewhere around this year, around 300 boxes of mac and cheese, which goes to mostly to the homeless. We also have an annual October Soccer Fest. And this last year, we collected and donated over 650 pairs of socks. And then this last month, we were fortunate to have donated by the California State University at Fullerton Foundation, they received three pallets of new clothes for children from Vietnam. And we were lucky to receive about a half a ton of that. And we donated half of that to Coachella Valley Rescue Mission and a half of that to, to the Palm Springs Elementary, excuse me, Palm Springs Unified School District Foundation for distribution to students in the valley. Actually, and someone that, of course, Ranch Mirage. We also, of course, are active in the Baptist School Program and donate materials, backpacks, and school supplies to CAVRM and Salvation Army. And we have some hands-on projects. We've adopted two miles of highway just north of Palm Springs and cleaned that up six times a year. And so here is the motley crew that we had for that, one of the recent cleanups. And thanks to the city of Ranch Mirage, we were able to participate in the art fair and poured wine and beer at the Porlulus. And then last week, we were able to distribute 350 pairs of shoes to students in need at Ranch Mirage Elementary School and Ranch Mirage High School. And those shoes were provided through funding of $5,000, in part, $5,000 that our club foundation donated for this project. And of course, we all know what this photo is, we've seen on TV. So one of the things we do is international and national disaster relief. And we gave $2,000 to the Maui Foundation, Rotary Foundation for Disaster Relief in Maui. One, I don't have a slide, but another thing we do is that we have a program for nursing scholarships. This last year, we gave a total of $6,000. There was four scholarships of $1,000 apiece, plus four $500 stipends for the registration and testing for the nurses. And that's through the Cal State University San Bernardino at the local campus. Last October the 8th, we were fortunate to have the president of Rotary International, Jennifer Jones, speak to our local community and to District 5160 for Rotary. I think some of you attended that event. It's very unusual. She was the only, only time in California she spoke was here in the desert, which was nice. She was the first woman president for Rotary International, very dynamic woman. And we were very pleased to have the city of Ranch Mirage recognize our club in the brochure, the full color brochure that they handed out that night. And now it's my opportunity to reciprocate and present to the city a certificate of appreciation for your support, your strong support for our club. And so at the end of each of our meetings, we recite this out loud to remind us the way that we Rotarians want to live our lives. And I'm going to do it for you. Of the things we think, say, and do. Number one, is it the truth? Number two, is it fair to all concerned? Number three, will it be goodwill and better friendships? And four, will it be beneficial to all concerned? So I invite everybody here today and everybody who's watching to attend our meetings and look into Rotary as a way of providing back service to your community. I know that's what a lot of us in the community want to do. I was extremely impressed last year when I applied for a vacant position on the city council. And I think we had like 24 applicants or something like that. Just amazing number of people in the community here who want to give back. So we meet, as shown here, at least on every first and second Thursday at the library. We had our meeting this morning. Right now, we're doing hybrid meetings, so we have both Zoom meetings as well as in-live. For those of you who can't get up at 7:30, you can participate online and still wear your pajamas if you want to. And then on the last Thursday of each month, we have a social meeting at the Mission Hills Country Club at 6:00 PM where we have dinner. And normally, we have a speaker there who is somebody special. Ted's speaking to us in a couple of months now, I think. And then, so I want to just thank you for your interest and support in the club, and I'll see you again in a couple of years. Thank you. I brought some, I brought some brochures with me, as well as some little invite cards. I'm going to place them on the table outside the room here, so anybody wants to pick up a brochure and learn more about us, go online or give us a call.
David, I'll make a comment while the mayor is coming back to his, to his seat. The Rotary does a great job, and you've been, you know, a great leader of the Rotary for now, for some time. But the contribution to the community is outstanding. You know, whether it's raising funds, or whether it's cleaning the highways, whether it's donating to the rescue mission, it's all encompassing. And it's just heartwarming to see the degree of charity that the Rotary does. So thank you for being the leader and thank you for everything that you do. We appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'd like to echo that, David. Thank you so much for you and your team that you've put together, all the volunteers, the hands-on work that goes into making everything happen. It's not just the funds, but it's the workers. And without you and your team, all of this wouldn't be possible. So thank you.
Thank you. You're all invited to any of our questions, by the way. The city is a member and you're all designated as associates for the club.
All right. Thank you, David. The next presentation will be an update from the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert, and we have Cindy Burris and the CEO here today. Welcome, Cindy.
Thank you. Good afternoon, city council, city staff, and guests. It's not just me today. I have an exciting announcement, two announcements. First of all, we are opening in 200 days from today. So March 25th is going to be our grand reopening. And with that grand reopening, we have to have an amazing staff. And we have added Paige Elder, who's going to be our Director of Education. She just started this week, so I wanted to introduce her to all of you. She comes to us from Desert Sands Unified School District. She was one of my son's teachers, and I can attest, she is amazing, and we are so lucky to have her on our team. So very excited about that. Today, we have a video that we're going to show you. But first, I wanted to really thank all of you because not only has the city of Ranch Mirage stood behind us this entire time for 25 years from a financial standpoint, but also each of you as city council members, come to our fundraisers, you've come and toured the museum, and you've really been a champion for the museum. And I just want to, on behalf of myself and our Board of Directors, staff, and all the littles that are going to be coming in 200 days, thank you all from the bottom of my heart for really caring about the museum. And I'm going to let the video produced by Kai, thank you very much to Kai, and the marketing team here at Ranch Mirage, speak for everything else that's going on. It's very exciting. This is a place where we help grow future leaders. It's a place with hands-on learning, where kids and their families enjoy learning about the world around them. I am Cindy Burris, and I'm the CEO of the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert. We've been fundraising for the past couple of years. We've been closed since the pandemic, but we're bringing the museum back in a big way for our littles. And the greatest news is, we have a date of reopening, which is going to be March 25th. With the reimagination, we have 40 new exhibits, and they're going to be in six different sections. And we have everything from a rock climbing wall to an animation station, to a library for caregivers, a toddler space, all kinds of things going on. The city of Ranch Mirage has always been a great partner and champion for the museum. Everything from Mayor Kite is on our Board of Directors and has been for the entire time of the museum, to the city of Ranch Mirage starting a matching campaign, which was integral in getting us going on our fundraising. It helped the community see that Ranch Mirage really loves families and cares about the kids and cares about what this place means to the community. In 2019, we saw nearly 87,000 visitors, and two out of three visitors came from out of the area. In addition to that, we also saw thousands of families from across all nine cities in the Coachella Valley. So we have been fortunate that we partnered with First Bank, and they stepped in and helped us to get a line of credit so that we could close our fundraising gap in order to finish this project and open for the community. However, it is borrowed money, so we are constantly going to be fundraising moving forward to, first of all, pay that, but then always to update and renovate this place to give our community the best product we possibly can. With our reopening, we're going to not only be bringing the fun for the kids, but we're also going to be creating dozens of jobs and lots and lots of volunteer opportunities for our community. This place is magical. It has been a multi-generational gem in this valley, and we will be reopening for everybody with gratitude and excitement on March 25th. So there you have it. So thank you again to all of you for all of your support. Thank you, Mayor Kite, for being there every month at our board meetings and for your input and your guidance and for being there the entire time for 25 years with the museum. We appreciate you and all of you. So thank you so much.
25 years has gone by in a hurry, but we're getting there.
We're getting there.
And March of next year will be an unbelievable grand opening, I'm sure.
It will be.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
Our third presentation today is an announcement from the Ranch Mirage Certified Farmer's Market is coming back, and we're all excited. And Christina Green, the owner-operator, is here to tell us about it.
Hi there. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. My name is Kristiana Green, and we are coming back for, I think officially, our third season, but it will be our second at the Ranch Mirage Community Park, which we have really enjoyed being at. We are so grateful for the city allowing us to be there and purchasing the property and preparing parking lots for our growth. I just wanted to let you know that only 17% of our population actually shop at Farmer's Market. So that means in a room of about 50 people, we're looking at about 41 who have never probably been to a Farmer's Market. And the reason that Farmer's Markets are integral to our community is not only because it should support small family farms, but it's able to deliver our families fresh food that was literally picked the day before or the day of for you and traveled the least amount of miles to get to you. So not only are we supporting our local economy, but you're getting more delicious, nutritious, and tasting food than you would ever get at a grocery store, which, by the way, at no grocery store can you go and get the farmer's first name. So it's really important to shop at Farmer's Markets so that you can not only provide a better, healthy lifestyle for your family, but you're also supporting families that live within 100 miles of the Coachella Valley. Not all of our farmers come from the Coachella Valley because in the Coachella Valley, most of the farmers grow for grocery stores in our large scale. So at the Farmer's Markets, what you'll find is small family farms that are certified producers of the products they sell, and they can only sell to you what they personally grew and literally picked the day before. So it's all in-season, regionally seasonal. My daughter gets mad when we have a break and we have to go shopping for blueberries or raspberries because they literally mold the next day. But when you buy a blueberry or raspberry at the Farmer's Market, it's good for over a week because it was literally picked the day, probably the morning of or the day before you got it. We wanted to let you know that we are available to accept WIC for women and children and seniors, so that is a benefit that we offer the community. We have a lot of new vendors coming this year. I personally built a food truck, and it's called Top of the Toast. And I will be featuring all of the produce bought from the farmers that day, turning it into a fresh breakfast and lunch for the community. And you'll find out at all the Farmer's Markets. We have a new manager for the Farmer's Markets. It's Dylan and Joshua, so you will find them daily, every morning, setting up. We wanted to let you know that being at the park is a perfect place for you to have and come and shop at the market. And because we're at the park to enjoy a day, we have a lot of young families that come enjoy a picnic, and we hope to see you there for that. We have free yoga every Friday at 10:00 AM, provided to you by Olivia, and it's a great place to get with your community and then shop fresh local produce. This year, we will also be connecting with the schools in Ranch Mirage and hoping to do a school-to-Farmer's Market program like we recently did in Indian Wells, which was wonderful. And if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them afterwards, but I know that Kai has made a beautiful video for us, so if you could play that, even though I don't like myself in it. Hi, I'm Kristiana with the Ranch Mirage Certified Farmer's Market. This season, we're back and better than ever, and we want you to discover what's new. Fresh food, live entertainment, great people, and even free yoga. Happens every Friday at the Ranch Mirage Community Park, starting in October all the way through May, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. For more information, you can find us online at cvcfm.org or on our social media channels, on Facebook and Instagram at Rancher Mirage Certified Farmer's Market. We'd love for you to capture your memories here at the market and make sure to share them with us on social media. So stop by and discover what's new this season at the Rancher Mirage Certified Farmer's Market. So I leave you with this. Our motto for all the markets, we run Wednesday, Palm Desert, Thursday, Indian Wells, Friday, Ranch Mirage, and Sunday, Old Town, La Quinta. And what we ask everyone is, do you know where your food comes from? There used to be a commercial when we were all in the 80s saying, do you know where your children are at 10:00 PM? I ask you, do you know where your food comes from? Because if you don't know your farmer, then you probably don't know your food. We hope to see you at the market. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
That's it for the presentations today, so we can move on to non-agenda public comments. So this is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on issues that are not on our agenda today for a maximum of three minutes, and we'll turn this over to the city clerk.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Susan Ragsdale.
I'm always very appreciative of the opportunity to speak to you all. My, my public comment is not very pleasant, unfortunately. First, I want to say that I already came into City Hall a year ago or so and wrote a piece of paper in front of Shirley saying I would never sue the city of Ranch Mirage for all the abuse I've endured at Whispering Waters since March 2019, plus the malicious prosecution of my illegal eviction. I am currently in court, still, and my eviction was December 5th. The KTS switched judges from the guy, Commissioner Hester, who is the expert on unlawful detainers, and I got Bustamante, the brand-new judge, who really didn't know anything about it at all. He didn't know about the fraudulent practices of some property management companies who evict the victim of hostile environment harassment, which is what has happened to me. And the reason I'm here is because I'm desperate. I'm living in my car, waiting for my appeal. In Riverside, I go in front of five judges. And of course, I'm very, very nervous about, I don't like any of this legal stuff. I never in my life had anything to do with court or suing people or anything. But I do have, I had attorney advice, and I was told that I should do small claims cases against the property management company and all the bullies. And so on December 12th, when Mrs. Sony Cabera gets over her maternity leave and my appeal probably will be finished, we have a December 12th court date. I have that property management for $10,000, the D'Agostino's for another $10,000, all the other bullies, six of them, for $25,000. I have only sent demand letters to three, and I'm waiting to be able to schedule the December 12th when Hester wants to see everybody at the same time. Hide a property management got away with defrauding everybody, everybody here, seriously. It's terrible. Okay, I know I have a lot here, and I'm going to try and make it a little. Reports on bullying from October 2018 to July 2020. This is a 106-page document of emails I wrote to both Mrs. Cabera and to Marcus Alimon, describing all the abuse and how it made me feel. I'm giving this to you. At FedEx, they told me it's easy to look at when they bind it like this. This is my all-in-one case, and I'm going to run out of time, and I don't like to do that. I hate to burden anybody. But I made miniature, black and white cases for all of you, and they have some addendums. One is my illegal eviction. Most of these are peppered with video freeze frames of the abuse I got. This is a mother and her, a mother and her son who, they work as a team. They were on one side of me, and then I had really, really terrible. If you have a bad opinion of me, I want to show you the guys who started it all. These are the people you believe. These are the people you believe. I'm crazy. I'm not crazy at all. I'm artistic, and I'm creative, and I'm different. I think that's a good thing. My main thing in life is compassion and love. The whole time I was being abused, I was in my apartment making artwork about compassion and love and kindness and all that. You know, I'm a very prolific artist. I work in Photoshop doing digital collage. You've seen some of it. I was one of the sweetest people there, and I had friends, and it's just that the manager, I made her look bad by reporting what happened, and so she went after me, and I got 14 false harassment, false allegations and harassment warnings for two and a half years, the termination of tenancy. I already was so beat up by the time I got to court and they switched judges, and Bustamante used to be the district attorney, so he acted like a prosecutor. It scared me to death. I couldn't hardly speak. I'm hardly able to speak now. I'm, I'm dying. I weigh 95 pounds. Before this started, I was 135. I live in my car, and now I'm in the third month. You should have seen how hot it was in August. I park in the covered parking over by the library. I'm suffering from extreme traumatic stress. If you go to the Mayo Clinic and look up the symptoms, I have every single one of them, and it started in February, in January 2020, when I got the first harassment. I'm sorry, I'm not speaking into this. This is the hardest thing. I'm telling you, I'm dying. I have no family whatsoever, nobody to go to, no money. I just needed to get some, I live in a 2006 Toyota Matrix. Today, I got the response from my appellate opening brief, which I have included in your packets here. It's only two pages. Anyway, I got a 15-page yada-yada thing from KTS. It's just, it's just constant. I, I have been consumed by self-defense, and I'm completely innocent. I, you know, I have friends who love me. I, I've lived here since 2009. This is my home. Can you believe it? I can't go anywhere but magnesium, false COVID in my car every night. I live at Starbucks, where I've gone since 2009. I live at the library, where all the librarians know me and can't even believe this is happening to me. They just, they've seen all the pictures. I've already given two of these to you through Marcus Alimon and Isaiah Hagerman. I can't afford it. This is $25. I'm keeping my last one, but I did make these for you, and I really hope you can appreciate it. My main thing is, I need an apartment to live in. I'll take any vacancy you have in the city. I don't, you know, I'm going to sign away all the liabilities, so please give me a break. I, I'm afraid of dying. I, I can't take it. I'm not myself, not at all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kristi?
Thank you. The next speaker is Eric Cunningham.
My name is Eric Cunningham. I am a resident here at Ranch Mirage. I have, I'm here on behalf of a group called theextraproject.org. It's kind of a think tank out here in Ranch Mirage. And we've been thinking about a kind of, a little bit of an odd idea that I wanted to run by all of you, but it's specific to Ranch Mirage, and it is based on, as I'm sure you all know, that Ranch Mirage is known as the playground of the presidents. And I've, since moving here, I've heard that term, and it's really interesting to me. I learned all about, you know, Gerald Ford, and Reagan, and Eisenhower, and all this stuff. And it felt very unique to Ranch Mirage. So in this extraproject.org, we were kind of tossing this idea around. So in this extraproject.org, we were kind of tossing this idea around of what if Ranch Mirage were to convert an existing park here in Ranch Mirage into a literal playground of the presidents? So we would put up little placards that are educational about Gerald Ford, and Reagan, and all the Eisenhower stuff like that. But again, it is a playground of the presidents. So instead of a jungle gym, you would have a jungle Jimmy Carter. And instead of a ropes course, you would have a Franklin D. Ropes event. And you would have some bushes for George W. Bush, for George Bush Senior. There's a lot of puns that you can make with this stuff. But it felt like a very fun idea that we could do here in Ranch Mirage, help solidify that nickname, Playground of the Presidents, which again, I think you cannot buy. It's something only we have, and hopefully would not be too expensive. But anyway, this was kind of an idea that we were tossing around. I will be bringing it to the Parks and Trails Commission meeting coming up next week to kind of talk it through with them, but I also wanted to run it by you all to see for any reactions or to give you guys a chance to come up with more puns, because it is a very fun thing to do. Right? Thank you.
Thank you for coming in today. Interesting idea.
Brad Anderson.
Good morning, good afternoon. My name's Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Ranch Mirage, too. I just wanted to speak on just, I guess, one topic really, and it's the administrative citation process through the city and through a lot of the cities. I know I've tried, like one of the other speakers, tried to litigate my way through the city process, but it's, anybody that attempts to do this is going to be unsuccessful, and if anybody did, has been successful, please contact me. I'd like to know about that, because I haven't been able to find anybody. But, so I'm just, I guess I'm requesting the city to revamp its code compliance issues, because once you get a citation, unless you come and plead and beg the city council to drop it, it's going to go forward, and you're going to be convicted. I was, I have an issue that I had an Ocotillo plant on my property that was leaning over, and the city declared it dead. And I said, well, it's not dead, it's just that way. And I noticed at City Hall, you have an Ocotillo that's not totally vertical, so I worry that the code compliance may have that cited, too. So I'm joking, of course, but I just guess it's going to be an issue, but I'm going to make it an issue for as long as I live in the city. So I talked about ethics before with the city council, city attorney, and this is an ethical issue, and hopefully, and you had other speakers concerned about the housing element of the city, and I understand that things do happen, but it's, I fear that maybe you have to know somebody in the city to get something, to prosper in the city, and maybe that should be the way we go forward, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wally Melendez.
Speaking of the famous charger, the hydrogen charger. And I'm up here because this is a good platform, not only for the city of Ranch Mirage, and I don't know where this, there's a broadcast where it goes, but, and I've spoken about the charger so many times, and I'm expecting, I'm hoping that some company or some companies will contact Ranch Mirage and say, hey, let me sell you a hydrogen charger. It's a thing of the future. Get with the future. And I want to tell you something about prices. Don't let some joker come in here and try to sell you a charger for $5 million. You can put it in for $500,000. So use your head. I also want to talk about Ranch Mirage University. We need a university out here. We have COD, the famous police campus. So, speaking about cars, the famous mirai that I used to talk about, well, I went to look at it. It's junk. So I'm expecting Hyundai that makes the Nexo. I hope their style is more purty. Mirai's ugly. So we're fighting here, like I said before, the oil companies and the classic car companies. And we need to get with the future. We need to get with global warming. And by the way, the mayor has a responsibility to remind people of the three-minute limit.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on a matter not on the agenda? Please state your name.
Good afternoon. Excuse me. Good afternoon. My name is Mark DeBose. I live on Vista del Sol. Vista del Sol is the road that's being used for Cotino to hook up its sewer line, I guess, to the main line. I'd like to invite you all to take a drive down it from Country Club to Frank Sinatra. It's all one mile, and get a little taste of what we've been dealing with for the last month. I know this is part of developing the area and something we got to go through. I just hope it will remind you all that we do need to get that road paved. It's something that the city council has talked about, and city staff has addressed. Since that meeting many months ago, we haven't, those of us on the road haven't heard much of an update. I hope it's moving along. I hope that it will be paved soon. Right now, it's been reduced to sand, so I just hope that you all keep that moving forward, and I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? That was the last speaker.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here today and giving your viewpoint on what's going on in Ranch Mirage. Moving on now, I'd like to invite our council members to have comments, if they have. So I'd like to start with Councilmember Malato. Do you have any comments?
Just a short comment, but a big thank you to our public works staff for their never-ending work during Hurricane Hillary and then the storm that followed through last Friday when we were only supposed to have a 10% chance of rain. I think the weather modules got it wrong, but our public works crew, our thanks for their continual work, and that was on a holiday weekend, too, might I say. I think a few of them were ready to go out of town for vacation and ended up backpacking it here. Thank you, Ryan.
Councilmember Marker, do you have a comment today?
Yes, I do. Thank you. National Preparedness Month is an observance each September to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. And to echo what Lynn said, with the recent tropical storm we experienced, it should be a wake-up call on the importance of being prepared and working together as a community in the event of an emergency. I'm very proud of how our city worked together to help those in our community, our hospital, and our neighboring cities. Looking ahead into this fast approaching season, it is an El Nino, which is forecast, and in the past, these have tended to result in wetter-than-average conditions across the southern half of the country, including Southern California, which we have obviously been seeing. And we can do our best to prepare for this in the future. Most of our days are gorgeous weather, so have your roofs checked, your drains cleared, and we've got plenty of sand to fill up, to store a few sandbags in your garages. And second, we should always be prepared for an earthquake. And for a comprehensive list, please go to our website on ranchamirage.gov or ready.gov. You'll find a comprehensive list for any type of an emergency or disaster for preparedness.
Okay, next is Member Wild. Do you have any comments, Ted?
I do, Mayor. Thank you very much. This is a quick summary and update. I'm often asked about Cotino, where we stand. As you can tell, when you drive by, there are certain things now that are very visible. I have said that this will be a transformative project in the history of Ranch Mirage. It will be just quite dramatic. As of now, the block wall is progressing around the perimeter of the property. It has gone down Bob Hope Drive and is approximately 40% complete. You'll notice that there are certain areas that are decorative, but it is moving quite rapidly. The gatehouse construction off of Gerald Ford has commenced. They're in the early stages of construction with walls that will be going vertical in the next few weeks. A age-qualified community, kind of a polite way to say over 55, I guess, will be an area of development within Cotino. Part of that development will be a park area and a covered pavilion. That is in the early stages of construction at the present time. The sales studio, to be located off of Gerald Ford, is nearing completion at the present time. Sales will commence, at the present time, projected to be late this year. The lagoon is under construction in the very early stages with certain shell walls completed. So the grading has really just been completed. It's the very, very early stages, but that, of course, will be the major feature of the project. The first single-family residential development is going through the planning process at the present time, as well as the permitting process. The recently-approved design guidelines are being implemented, and of course, at one of the council meetings previously, you were able to see some of the renderings of what the houses will look like. Now, when we received those renderings, there was nothing vertical that we received. That was only the outline of the project, but as you can see, it's quite dramatic and is also very varied as far as the selection. Lastly, if you noticed, in again, going down Bob Hope or Gerald Ford, there are very large sewer lines that are presently being installed along Bob Hope and also Vista del Sol. So again, you're going to see dramatic changes, really, something that will be very, very visible starting next year, but it is moving at breakneck speed. Again, not to be repetitive, but it will be a transformative project that will be something that all of us are going to be extremely proud of. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Ted. It's really great to hear what's going on there, and I think we're all looking forward to the future there. Next, the mayor pro tem down. Do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So today, I want to talk about Find Food Bank. In this case, fine means food in need of distribution, and Find Food Bank is dedicated to relieving hunger and the causes of hunger. Their vision is to create a community that is free of hunger and food insecurity. Now, the reason I'm talking about Find Food Bank today is because September is Hunger Action Month. Hunger Action Month is a nationwide campaign to raise awareness, to help put food on the table for many families in the Coachella Valley. Food insecurity is spiking, and due to a 40-year-record-high inflation rate, the escalated cost of living is forcing some families to choose between housing utilities and a healthy meal. Now, Find Food Bank is asking for the local community to come together to aid in serving the growing number of people facing hunger. Find Food Bank helps feed 150,000 people each month. So I want to encourage everyone in Ranch Mirage to think about taking action this month, to volunteer, to advocate, and to donate to Find Food Bank. To find out more information, visit www.findfoodbank.org, or call them at 760-775-3663. So thank you, Find Food Bank, for the great work you do for the Coachella Valley, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. And we'll now move on to the comments from the city manager. Isaiah, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just two quick comments for the council today. So I just wanted to take a second to thank our housing staff. I know we had a speaker earlier, and when people come to us with a need, if the city can't satisfy that need, then we try to find them the appropriate resource. So, you know, they have been in coordination with Adult Protective Services, and so far, what we've heard from Adult Protective Services is that the help offer was rejected, and so staff continues to do their job and do their job well, but I just wanted to acknowledge them for trying to help, even though it wasn't something that the city could help with. They tried to connect the person with the right department at the county that provided those services. The other item that I wanted to speak to was Vista del Sol. Since that was brought up, that roadway is currently under design, and so that requires us working with numerous other agencies for utilities and things like that to properly design that roadway. So that is something that is still in the works. Unfortunately, it just takes a little bit of time to go through that process, but we're expecting something that we could send to bid at the start of next year, 2024. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're moving on to the consent calendar, so Isaiah, that's your job again.
Back up. All right. You have six items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to approve your August 17 regular meeting minutes. Item number three is to approve your August 24 special meeting minutes. Item number four is to approve the Ranch Mirage Energy Authority 2022 Power Content Label. Item number five are contracts, and item number six are demands. And before we get to council questions or comments, I'll turn this over to the city clerk for public comments on the consent calendar.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Brad Anderson.
Thank you again, Brad Anderson, City Ranch Mirage. I just wanted to comment on item number four, just because it's the 2022, and it's, I just, I guess I didn't have any, I guess the description is just so lacking of detail, I didn't have any idea what it was about, and I didn't know until I got here, the city council, to read the packet, because the online version was unacceptable, I couldn't have it delivered at my home, anyway, through the internet. I couldn't have it delivered at my home, anyway, through the internet. So I understand it's, apparently it's a routine manner, and that's why it's on the consent calendar, but also it's a couple hundred pages of stuff. And I think maybe having some discussion on that would be a disbeneficer for the residents of the city. Thank you.
That was the only speaker, Carter. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on a consent calendar item? That was the only speaker.
Any council comments?
If there are no comments, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Councilmember Wild, could you try your vote one more time? Okay, thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. I will now move on to the public hearing and start with item number seven, amending a special exhibit regulation. And Mina, our Director of Environmental Services, would you present the staff report?
Absolutely. Thank you and good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Item seven on today's agenda is the review and discussion of zoning text amendment ZTA 23-0001. Can I have the presentation, please? Thank you. The intent of the presented ordinance is to regulate the impacts of commercial events, permit nonprofit events with a permit, and allow private events without a permit on residential property. The amended ordinance includes the following: it prohibits commercial events, allows private events on residential properties without a permit, allows nonprofit special events with a permit. The nonprofit special events are limited to five permits a year and must be held a minimum of 14 days apart. Based on previous planning commission study sessions and meetings, the following amendments have been included in the draft ordinance that is being considered today. A provision was added that stipulates that payment or compensation to the property owner is prohibited for use of the private property for nonprofit special events. The city manager's determination may be appealed to the planning commission for consideration. And amendments were requested to require application submittals a minimum of 15 working days prior to the event instead of 30, and to clarify that the applications would be reviewed promptly. Staff conducted an analysis of the city's noise ordinance levels pursuant to Chapter 8.5 of the municipal code and found that the city is consistent with other Coachella Valley cities, and the limits set are appropriate. Staff is also requesting a minor amendment to be made per the city attorney's recommendation to Section 15.12.270 under letter F. The city attorney is requesting that section to now read, "Allowing any person to consume, sell, or be in possession of intoxicating liquor in, around, or near the place where the nonprofit special event is held, except where such consumption or possession is expressly authorized under the laws of the state." That concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Kristi, do we have any public testimony?
Yes, now is the time for anyone to provide public testimony on agenda item number seven. Our first speaker is Brad Anderson.
Great. Thank you again, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I'm glad the city took the stance, but again, I don't think this is the right avenue to take, because you're allowing nonprofits, and why don't you just not allow anybody? And the reason is because of special interests and the relationship that they have with the city council and city officials. That's my premise. Again, one of the aspects is if you got denied this permit that you would have to, if the city manager did allow it, you could only appeal it to the planning commission. And I think any actions like that need to come up to the city council, which are elected officials, and they can decide this, and we know how that will go. But that's my opinion. I'm getting kind of off track here. This is, I've had a lot of nonprofit events next to my home for a number of years, and I understood it used to be four, but now it's five. I'm not against it. I'm against people regulating other people's property. That's what I'm against, but I'm against, it's a fine line that you have to draw, or a walk, I guess, between private property and the community as a whole, and how you affect that community. I think any permits paid should go to the property owners nearest that property, because they're the ones burdening the repercussions of the, well, whatever's happening to that property. They're the ones with the traffic issues and the people and the garbage and the trash and all that comes along with it. It's a fine attempt, but again, I don't think this is the city's responsibility to dictate this only special interest, I'm calling it special interest, whatever, special, special something, special events, I guess, or special, what do they call that again? I'm sorry, nonprofits. Nonprofits, it's got a dirty, dirty word now, because it's just government and nonprofits are the same thing. And not that I'm anti nonprofit. But anyway, I'm going to leave it at that, but I'm against the aspects of this and the people that can appeal. They should be able to come to the city council and then possibly do a legal attachment with the county. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on agenda item number seven? Thank you. Please state your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark DeBose. To begin, I'm in favor of changing the existing special events ordinance so that it no longer requires a permit for a private event. I think that's a great idea. I believe this proposed ordinance accomplishes that goal. However, if the city's going to allow non-private special events with a permit, then those permits should be available to anyone and not just organizations that don't pay taxes. Further, if such non-private events with a permit are allowed, then the homeowner should be able to receive compensation for the risk they incur, the effort they incur, and the improvements and upkeep to the property which they may need to make. The current special events ordinance does not prohibit a homeowner from receiving payment for the use of their property by a nonprofit organization for a special event. While I've not heard of any complaints about special events in the last four years, even if such complaints exist, they have zero to do with whether or not the homeowner receives compensation or not. The regional versions of the revised special events ordinance did not prohibit compensation to homeowners for nonprofit to use the property. However, after a single complaint by a planning commission member, the proposed ordinance was revised to prohibit any such compensation. This was apparently based on the misplaced presumption that homeowners were forbidden to receive compensation for the temporary use of the residence. The planning commission likened the receiving of compensation for the temporary use of one's home for a special event to the temporary use of a home as a short-term rental. However, since the planning commission meetings, I've learned every residence in Cotino will be allowed to lease their homes on a short-term rental basis, despite the ordinance banning short-term rentals for the rest of us. Thus, it has become clear to me that the basis for taking away our rights as homeowners is not truly based on the premise that homeowners cannot receive compensation for the short-term use of the property. Clearly, there's no difference between an event where a homeowner is paid versus one where the homeowner is not paid. Both events would have the same number of people, the same permitting process, the same rules, and the same potential issues for neighbors. It's my understanding the revising of the special events ordinance was to reduce government intrusion to our private lives and to protect the property rights of homeowners in Rancho Mirage. While this proposed ordinance gives us back a right to conduct our private lives with a little less government intrusion, it then takes away a right which was not even an issue. I would like to know why this council would take away the current right of compensation held by existing homeowners while granting the homeowners of Cotino the right to receive compensation for temporary short-term use. It would seem to me those of us who live here and pay taxes should be allowed the same rights as those who have not yet moved to our city. To be clear, I'm not asking you to take away any property rights from those who will live in Cotino, only to grant those same rights to those of us who already live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Sorry. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item? That was the last speaker.
Thank you. Any council comments on this item?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So I want to begin a discussion about this item by going back to the November election, when three members of this council were elected and sit on this dais today. There were six people running for these three seats, and the key issue in that election was short-term rentals. And the three of us who were elected, myself, Lynn Mulatto, and Meg Marker, made it clear that we favored the city's ban on short-term rentals. We made it very clear to every group that we spoke to during that election campaign. The three opponents who campaigned against us, they were in favor of removing the city's ban on short-term rentals. In fact, two of them were members of a group that filed suit against the city to do away with the city's ban on short-term rentals. To date, they're unsuccessful. Now, the results of that election campaign, the three of us who sit here on this dais today, who are in favor of retaining the city's ban on short-term rentals, won that election over the other three by a rate of 61% to 39%. The people of the city of Rancho Mirage have spoken loudly and clearly that they do not want short-term rentals in the residential communities of the city of Rancho Mirage. In fact, including Cotino, there will be no short-term rentals in the residential communities in Cotino. So I don't know where that information comes from, but it is untrue. I will be voting yes in favor of this motion when it is made. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may. You know, this issue essentially has to do with the two issues. Number one, the preservation of the lifestyle, peace and quiet of a residential property. And number two is the protection of the zoning ordinance. When people have purchased a property in a R1 residential zone, the idea is that it's for residential reasons. I've said before that one would not want, for example, an automobile repair shop to be built next to them in a residential area. Again, albeit this is extreme, it's an idea of a violation of zoning. What we're doing here is the protection of the zoning, because we have an obligation to those people that bought their property under a certain condition, and that condition was that it would be for a resident as opposed to a commercial property. Therefore, as per the Mayor Pro Tem's comments, I too feel strongly about the preservation of our dignity, peace and quiet, and the zoning of our area. And therefore, I too am supportive of this particular issue. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further comments from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. As this is a very delicate matter, it's about a balance of homeowners' rights and protecting the lifestyle of the Rancho Mirage residents. I support homeowners' rights to congregate and have gatherings in their homes with family and friends, as long as it is in a respectful manner and not used as a business, and the residence is not acting as a short-term rental. When I ran for office, I said I did not and I do not support short-term rentals. I'm very pleased in how thoughtful this ordinance was written and that it will accomplish both of these things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I have one thing to add, Mr. Mayor, if I may. So the noted adjustment that Mina made during her presentation, that's on page 7-22 of the staff report. And so the intent of this provision is not to disallow alcohol consumption at a permitted event. The point of this provision is to make sure that they get the proper license and certification from ABC in order to do that, so it's legal. So that was the reason that, per the city attorney, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, we struck seven words out of item F, which is what Mina read. So if there is a motion, if you would include that minor amendment within your motion, that would be appreciated.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for this item?
I'll be happy to make that motion, Mayor. And I will, part of this motion will be inclusive of the comments that the city manager just said, that will be included in the motion itself. That the city council approve the filing of a notice of exemption pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, Guideline Sections 15378 and Section 15061b3b. Approve zoning text amendment case number ZTA 23-001 to amend Municipal Code, Chapter 5-5.12, relegating special events and C. Approve and introduce ordinance number next in order, first reading amending Chapter 5.12, special event permits of Title V Business Taxes, business taxes, licenses, and regulations of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, per and to better regulate special events on private residential property within the city. And again, to include in there the amendment that was mentioned as it relates to alcohol, et cetera. So with that, that concludes my motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Now move on to the item number eight, which is a resolution dictating the pink elephant sign historic resource. Ben Torres, our planning manager, would you present his staff support, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. We'll give it a second here for the presentation to pop up. The pink elephant sign is located on the north side of Highway 111 on the Rancho Super Car Wash property, shown here. The Rancho Super Car Wash opened in 1966, and the sign was designed by Beatrice Haverfield, who started creating pink elephant signs in the mid-1950s for the Elephant Car Wash Company in Seattle. The pink elephant sign here in the city was included in our Historic Resources Survey. These are current photographs of the sign, which show the double-sided neon sign supported by two round steel posts. The sign depicts a pink elephant with a cap spraying water with its trunk on the words Rancho Super Car Wash, with neon tubes of various colors outlining the mascot and lettering. In the city of Rancho Mirage, there are no other original roadside neon signs still existing. The pink elephant sign is unique due to its size, use of color, neon animation, condition, and prominent location along Highway 111 as a landmark. This photograph shows the various neon colors used on the sign during the evening. And then here we have an image to the left, which is an advertisement from 1966 when the Rancho Car Wash opened, showing an image of the sign.
Think the prices are still the same, Ben?
No, unfortunately not. It would be nice, though. And then the image to the right is referencing the sign as a landmark, and this is from the Desert Sun. The property owner is seeking historic designation based on the following category from the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, that the subject's structure or site is associated with a business or use which was once common but is now rare or nonexistent within the city. The Historic Preservation Commission reviewed this request on July 12, 2023, and unanimously agreed that the pink elephant sign met the requirements for designation. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2023. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2023, annexed in order, designating the Pink Elephant Sign located at 71490, Highway 111, Rancho Mirage, California, historic resource. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. You have any, you have any questions from the?
Let me see. So this is the time for anyone to provide public testimony on Agenda Item Number Eight. Our first speaker is Brad Anderson.
Thank you again, Brad Anderson, City Rancho Mirage. Of course, I'm in favor of this because it's landmark. It's, and I never knew there was a gas station there. And that's, and so that's before my time, for sure, in the desert. I guess my only concern is the maintenance of the sign and the designation. I guess it's, again, I did have access to the staff report until this morning. So I imagine there's a tax incentive with the property tax, if that's a designated piece of property or by itself, and because the sign is the only historic event that we're, or that you're going to codify in this resolution today. But I'm all in favor. I know the city spends a lot of money there. They don't use the one right across the street, but they will go to that one. And I always think of that, and I think, wow, they get paid a lot of money, and they're seen there. But anyway, again, that's just me being mean today. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on Agenda Item Number Eight? That was the only speaker.
Thank you. Council, comments?
Mayor, if I may, just for clarification purposes, and Ben, this historic designation involves only the sign and not the property itself. And so we're dealing with a historic monument and not, not the property that would have any restrictions as a result of this designation. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So in our Historic Resources Survey, this is the only sign that's identified on there, but it's only for the sign's structure itself, not the car wash. So that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion, that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2023, next in order, designating the Pink Elephant Sign located at 71490, Highway 111, Rancho Mirage, California, assessors parcel number 684181011, a historic resource pursuant to Rancho Mirage Municipal, Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, Chapter 15.27.
I'll second that.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Mulatto, could you try one more time? Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We'll now move on. Keep those pink elephants going. Okay, number nine today on the agenda is resolutions related to Community Facilities, District Number Five, parentheses, Section 31, Cotino. And I'd like to ask Kofi Op, Kofi, to present this administrative service staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. So on December 16, 2021, the city council approved the formation of the Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number Five, which is the site of the Cotino project. The Community Facilities District included, includes four improvement areas to finance the acquisition through the issuance of CFD bonds of certain public facilities within the district. At build-out, the project is expected to include approximately 1,932 residential units, as well as various non-residential, commercial resort, and entertainment uses. So the action before you for consideration today are two resolutions. One, intent to annex territory into CFD Number Five, an improvement area one, and to make boundary adjustments affecting improvement area number one and improvement area number four, and also to amend the rate and method of apportionment of improvement area number one of CFD Number Five. So subsequent to the formation of the CFD, of CFD Number Five, there have been certain changes and developments within improvement area one, which requires that the CFD boundary map, the rate and method of apportionment, and the acquisition and funding agreement be amended. Specifically, there have been certain lot line adjustments that affect the boundaries of improvement area one and improvement area four, which requires an annexation of property to the improve, to improvement area one and the release of certain property. The adjustments will ensure that all intended residential properties are included in improvement area one boundary and subject to special taxes. For the rate and method, method of apportionment, it included a definition for club property with the intention that such property will be excluded from CFD special taxes. There have been significant progress with the planning and development of the property, providing more specific information about the club property. And so the rate and method of apportionment for improvement area one will be revised to include a most precise definition of the club property to ensure that it will be exempt from the levy of special taxes. As it relates to the acquisition and funding agreement, certain public improvement, public benefit improvements that will be owned by the property owners association or mutual water company will be financed by CFD bonds, bond proceeds. And so the acquisition and funding agreement will be amended to add these improvements to allow for their funding by CFD bonds. Today's action, if approved, is the first step of the amendment process. The second step is going to be a notice public hearing is going to be, is going to take place or proposed to take place at the council meeting on October 19, 2023. There is no fiscal impact to the city as a result of this action. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christie, do we have any public comments?
Thank you. Our first speaker is Brad Anderson.
Thank you again, Brad Anderson, City Rancho Mirage. Again, I'm, I was at a disadvantage. I thought maybe this was the public hearing, but anyway, I'm gonna be better, I'm gonna resource and find out exactly what I need to for the public hearing to, to comment on that at that time. Again, I just wanna, I guess, emphasize that when you write these on the agenda, they're just so colluded that I can't understand what you're talking about, and I don't think any other citizens of the city would have a reasonable expectation to understand what you were voting on today either. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on Agenda Item Number Nine? That was the only speaker.
Okay, thank you. Council comments here? No comments? Can I have a motion, please?
Certainly, Mayor. I'll make a motion that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2023, next in order, intention to annex territory to the city of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number Five, Section 31, and improvement area number one therein, and to make boundary adjustments affecting improvement area number one and improvement area number four and B, adopt Resolution Number 2023, next in order, to change the rate and method of apportionment of improvement area number one of the city of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number Five, Section 31.
And I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Now move on to number 10, a resolution related to Community Service District Number One, Annexation Number 192. And Jacob, our financial analyst, would you bring this forward?
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, city council. This item is the first step in the city's Community Facilities District Number One annexation process for developments within the city's jurisdiction. The second and final step is planned to be considered at the October 19 council meeting. The territory proposed for annexation is located on the east side of Villa Josefine, between an existing equestrian center to the north and the Versailles neighborhood to the south. It is comprised of seven parcels totaling approximately 33.74 acres, and the project is slated to subdivide the seven parcels into 82 residential lots. Tentative tract map 36620 was originally approved by the city council on December 4, 2014. Condition of approval number 29 for the project requires that the territory be annexed into CFD Number One. In accordance with the condition of approval, the owner of the annexed territory submitted a petition for annexation requesting that the city council initiate proceedings to annex the territory into CFD One and provide for expedited approval of the annexation and the levy of the special tax. Upon approval of the resolution, the city will be able to accept the petition submitted by the owner for annexation, consent to the levy upon the annexed territory, allow for the shortening of the time for the special election to expedite the annexation, accept and approve the preliminary annexation map and direct the city clerk to record the map, and finally, establish the date and time of the public hearing on the annexation of the territory. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jacob, excellent job.
Thank you.
Christie, do we have any comments?
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on Agenda Item Number 10? I did not receive any speaker cards. There are no speakers.
Okay, thank you. Any council comments on this item?
This is Jacob's first presentation to the city council, so you gotta ask him something.
Any, any comments from the council? Can I have a motion, please?
Jacob, if this were a more interesting issue, we'd be happy to ask this. But, but it's, it's not. We're, we're gonna vote yes on this.
Understandable.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. That the city council adopt, and by the way, great job on your first presentation. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
All right. The motion is that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2023, next in order, declaring the city's intention to annex territory to Community Facilities District Number One and to levy a special tax therein for additional police and fire services. Preliminary, preliminarily approve a map for the area proposed to be annexed and schedule a public hearing to consider the annexation and the levy of the special tax for annexation number 192.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Now move on to item number 11, which is the consideration of a multi-way stop control at Villa Tuscana and Deval. And our director of public works, Ryan, will you bring this present forward?
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you very much. Mayor and council members, here to give a brief presentation on staff's recommendation to implement a multi-way stop control, also known as a stop sign, at Deval Drive at Villa Tuscany. So by way of vicinity, this is on Deval Road, north of Ramon. Within the city of Rancho Mirage, the road is Villa Tuscany as you traverse west McCallum Way within the city of Cathedral City. Just to zoom in a little bit further, we're talking about the intersection highlighted here. The center line of the roadway indicates that Rancho Mirage is on the right, Cathedral Juristic, Cathedral City jurisdiction on the left. So just a little bit of background, we began getting some complaints in 2019 from the neighborhood adjacent, mostly related to speeding and exhibition of speed. And if anybody wants the legal definition of exhibition of speed, I'll ask the fine gentleman in the back to give it to you, but generally burning out, not stopping for the stop sign. We even get some complaints of, you know, people in the middle of the night doing, you know, circles and moving on. So some really odd complaints that staff has gotten periodically. In 2020, staff prepared what's referred to as a warrant study. A warrant study reviews the traffic volumes and movements going on at the intersection, and based on criteria found in the manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD, you either pass or fail based on certain criteria. In 2020, that warrant failed, so staff worked periodically with the traffic enforcement team of Riverside County Sheriff for some periodic spot checking of the area. Fast forward to 2022, again, resident concern started to increase, talked to many residents, also had a few offline conversations with HOA board members of the Tuscany community, and we decided it was a good idea to refresh the warrant study prepared in 2020.
Ryan, if I could just add something really quick. One of the big concerns from that neighborhood was the schools that they are zoned to are in Cathedral City on the other side of Deval, both the elementary school and the middle school. And there's actually no way to get from that community to those schools if you were going to walk to school. And the proximity would lend towards either biking or walking to school. And so I know one of the things that we heard from the community as far as a concern was kind of a safe route to school, not having a way to safely cross Deval.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you for adding that in there, Isaiah. The updated warrant report, after we take in traffic conditions occurring in 2023, we crunched a lot of numbers. There's a healthy amount of data in the report attached to your packet. We get the warrant study results that essentially tell us that a stop sign can legally be installed based on current volumes at this intersection. This item was presented to the Traffic Safety Commission in July, and they did unanimously recommend to the city council the implementation of the stop sign. Now on to design and implementation. The warrant report does say that you have to have a registered engineer do a design for the stop. We have prepared that design, which is shown on the screen. Again, this is a shared roadway with Cathedral City, so based on the consent, if Rancho Mirage city council approves this document, I have spoken the entire way with Cathedral City staff. They have verbally consented to the install of the stop sign. If approved, they would take this item to their city council for approval as well. Implementation, again, design is complete, bidding in construction, very short because we're talking mostly about striping and installing a few signs, probably a period of 30 to 45 days from the start of construction. So with that, that concludes my report. And to, again, get back to, if you could bring that presentation back up, I'm sorry, you guys, back to the, the city manager's comments, you'll note that we were able to, if I can get my clicker to work, but you can see there's two legs of the intersection that have crosswalks. We cannot land a crosswalk on an undeveloped parcel, which is why you don't see any crosswalk on the southern side or the western side of the intersection. It would be contemplated that as, as development occurs, we would finalize the crosswalks. But right now, given the existing condition, you get a crosswalk going north-south on the east side of the intersection and east-west on the north side of the intersection. So we have accomplished both the multi-way stop control and pedestrian crossing goals. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you very much. Good report. Christie, do we have any comments?
Yes, the first speaker is Nick Andros.
Well, I have to say, this is a pretty exciting day for me. My first council meeting, and I thank you all. I've spoken pretty much with all of the council members, and I've actually spoken with Gabe at one point, not about this, it was about the quick quack when the pandemic was going on, why it was closed, because you stay in your car. And he returned my call, and I have to tell you that everybody I've spoken with, with the city has been friendly, very accommodating. It's, it's really nice, and I think that you should all consider running the state or the national government because you seem more organized and understanding in how things should be done. But I wanted to thank Lynn for all of her help, because I know I started and got involved with it, with Lynn first, and I had met Mr. Downs and Mr. Wheel and Meg Marker. And I just got to say hi to you, I think, one time, but I didn't get to speak with you much. But I wanted to thank you for what you did, and, or what you're about to do, I guess, you haven't done it yet. And just thank you on behalf of the residents of Tuscany, because I think it'll be a great thing. And especially with you, Ryan, I've spoken with you quite a few times, and I'm sure I'll speak a little bit more, okay? and, and I'm sure I'll speak a, a little bit more. Okay? So thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Brad Anderson.
Hello again, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I'm all in favor of safety, and, and, and this is a safety issue, uh, especially, uh, when you have, it was stated that, uh, kids would be crossing to go to school, and that's, that's, you can't not say that you don't want it. You have to have it. So, uh, again, I think the story's kind of concluded, uh, that I think, well, I think most people that come out of that community probably had, uh, had, uh, south, I would think, uh. But again, it doesn't matter. Uh, if they want a stop sign, they should have a stop sign. Cathedral City, I'm sure, will be okay with that. Uh, I think if street racing is an issue, uh, more lighting should be an issue in that area. Let's put some street lights up. It's, um, and, and again, just fresh paint on lines, dividers, emphasize that area, put some speed signs if you don't have any. I, I cut through there all the time. I probably won't now. No, I'm kidding. But, uh, uh, and again, the cemetery district's right there. They should be probably part of this player, and, and of course, our city manager or city councilor is, uh, their city councilor too, and that's convenient. Uh, so they should probably be included with the Cathedral City portion of that. But, uh, as, as, I'm, I'm in favor of it. Um, I think a lot of people probably wouldn't be okay with the inconvenience of stopping, but, uh, but that's life in the desert. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? That was the last speaker.
Hey, thank you. Any council comments, questions?
I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Andros and his neighbor Patsy, who brought this to my attention right after I was elected and before I was sworn in. And I really appreciate the time that you extended to me and explained your circumstances that the residents were experiencing. Uh, with that, I took the message, brought it back here to City Hall. And Ryan, you and your team have been absolutely terrific again. Um, I also want to thank our sheriff's department, because I was able to relay the experiences that you were, uh, it, it, that's, that seemed to continue, the street racing, the, the wheelies in the middle of the intersection, and they put their enforcement officers on that as well. So collectively, we're going to have a resolve for you. But thank you again for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. Any comments down here?
I do, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, Nick, thank you so much for your vote of confidence and your suggestion that we might, uh, take on other responsibilities. But my hands are full right here, and I'm guessing everybody else is gonna say the same, so. Uh, but we appreciate your thought. Thank you very much. We're, we're gonna stay right here in Rancho Mirage.
Okay, is that an election campaign? Okay, any questions, comments? Uh, can I have a motion, please?
I'd love to make the motion that the city council approve the implementation of a multi-way stop control, MWSC, at Villa Tuscany and McCallum Drive and Deval Drive.
I'll second that.
Was that a second?
We had two seconds.
Okay, so what, which?
Go ahead and vote.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, great. All right, we're down to the last item on the agenda for this meeting. Uh, reassessment of local state of emergency for Tropical Storm Hillary. And, uh, Isaiah, are you gonna handle the staff report on this?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of, members of the council. Uh, this will be a short one. Uh, so I'd like to, uh, thank the council for extending, uh, the emergency proclamation. Uh, at this point, staff is recommending, uh, that if the council desires, uh, you can end this proclamation. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. We have any questions?
Christie, would you like to do public comments?
Certainly. Our first speaker is Brad Anderson.
Hi, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I'm opposed to any extension of this proclamation of emergency, because I don't think it exists at this point. Uh, it was, uh, and, and you had a city, a special city council meeting that I think a lot of people probably never knew about, but, uh, I guess, uh, and it was stated by the city attorney that this is just, uh, uh, an element of gaining resources for the city. And, and when I read through the ordinance that you used to pass this, it has nothing to say about collecting monies from outside parties, so I, I'm, I'm not in favor of it. Uh, I think you should postpone it. Uh, by you doing this, it's more or less saying that the city cannot control, they don't have the resources and they, and they can't deal with this, uh, emergency. And I know that's false, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on Agenda Item Number 12? That was the only speaker.
Okay. Council comments here?
Other than the fact, Mayor, that it makes total sense to extend the emergency ordinance.
Okay. Comments down this area? Can I have a motion, please?
Uh, Mayor, before there's a motion, um, so the city attorney mentioned last time, but just to, um, provide some clarity to it, uh, so when we get into these major events, um, the city did, uh, incur some, uh, additional costs that were unplanned. Um, we had to try to get our roadways back open quickly, and our public works team did a great job. Uh, you know, one of the things that the, um, proclamation did is it does make us eligible for reimbursements of some of those costs. So if you don't, uh, do the proclamation, then you're not eligible for potential reimbursement. So it would be a detriment to our residents if we didn't do this. So I thank the council for doing this. At this point, staff is recommending, if the council desires, that we can end this proclamation, because it is no longer needed.
Okay, great. Um, so, council, further comments? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion that we, uh, end the, uh, emergency proclamation.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, great. Um, excellent meeting today. Everybody had a great input. And, uh, turn to Steve for, uh, closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council is now gonna recess in a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, um, to discuss the following pending litigation items. Vacation rental owners and neighbors of Rancho Mirage at all versus City of Rancho Mirage, vacation rental owners and neighbors of Rancho Mirage versus City of Rancho Mirage, Wendy Hope Heckman versus City of Rancho Mirage, Hometown Colony, um, DBA, the Colony Mobile Home Park versus City of Rancho Mirage. Um, the, the, um, last pending litigation item, we don't have the case name specified in the agenda, since disclosure would jeopardize pending settlement negotiations. And the last item is conference with real property negotiators regarding property identified as APM 684150011. And the negotiating parties are Porcupine Properties and the City of Rancho Mirage, and it's regarding price and terms of payment.
We, we do have a speaker card for, uh, the closed session calendar?
Brad Anderson.
Thank you again, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I just wanted to speak on a few of the, um, closed session topics. At the last regular meeting, uh, there was an oversight, and I didn't get to speak, but, uh, I will speak today. I just wanted to, um, Items One, Two, uh, I think I just found out, I just assumed, but the city is acting, I think, irrationer by litigating against parties, uh, on these two issues or one issue. And, and, and I just hope to see, I've talked in ethics before, but I think my, my voice is just wasted on that, uh, because I think you're gonna do whatever you're gonna do. But these are the citizens of the city, and to litigate against them on a premise that any common sense or reasonable person would see as, uh, that, uh, that is morally corrupt. That's the words I'm using. So hopefully you can rethink that and just move on, and, uh, and allow the residents of the city to do that too, because we can, a lot of people came here to live retirement years, whatever the situation is, and not to be drawn down in litigation by their city that they live in. Uh, and, uh, and again, the Heckman case, that's the, uh, the, uh, issue we had earlier with the ordinance change, uh, about a special events or, yeah, special events. I don't think a lot of people know, but, uh, I think that's a unique issue. I've had issues with city council people that, uh, that support the people that live next to me, and, uh, not to get drawn out on that, but, uh, so when you have influences like that, like the city manager, I believe he has a direct influence on this case, and, and, and it, should it be that way? Uh, again, these are residents of the city, and for city staff or city council members to impede their will on the other people just because they can, I think is wrong. And that's, uh, and again, I'm gonna go down to the bottom item here, number, number six, and that's real estate negotiations. That's all new to me. I had to look up the, the, uh, number of the, the, the Porsche number, and it's in Whitewater Park, and that's the one I got. And I thought, why is that? I, when I, when I saw Porcupine Properties, I thought, oh, I know the city owns some property up by the, up by the tanks up there, and, and the water district just gave away the easement, and, well, sold the easement to Porcupine Properties or Porcupine. And I thought that's where it was, but I don't really know what's going on with the city park. I think, I thought the city already owned that, so are we negotiating to sell a piece of property the city has? That's what I'm determining, just by what I have, and that's all. And I'm against that if that's the case. Thank you.
With that, we will recess to closed session. Gonna reconvene the meeting and get the city attorney?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Can we adjourn this meeting?